Welcome to Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. It is September the 12th. We're here at the airport. If you will, if you'll bow with me and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we've come to you today and we thank you for those things that are spoken and unspoken. We're one day after September 11th and we still stand in remembrance for those lives that were lost and, Father, those families that are continued to be affected. Lord, I thank you for the men and women that protect and not only just serve our company abroad, but they're also here in the states, our emergency service providers, all of those people who protect us every day. Lord, help us. Let your will be done as we make these decisions today. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, considered Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Aaron, did we have anyone sign up for public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right. Seeing done, we'll move to our action items. We have item one, Resolution 24 R28. This is to increase annexation application fee.
My name is John Tully. I'm Assistant City Attorney. I'll be presenting this application for you. This is a proposal to increase the fee associated with annexation of new properties into the city limits. This is being gendered because of a change in state law that recently took effect regarding the notice requirements for annexation publication. So previously, the fee that the city charges is about $500, which is just barely enough to cover the cost of publication of notice of public hearing, both in the newspaper, signs around the properties, mailing to adjoining property owners, and then as well as some portion of the staff time that's associated with processing the applications, preparing the plan of services. The state law, specifically its Public Chapter 701, it adds quite a few new requirements for the city annexation process. The primary one is it requires that the city publish in a newspaper the resolution as well as the full plan of services prior to annexation. That resolution plan of services also has to be mailed to the same adjoining property owners, but it also has to be mailed now to the county mayor and all the county commissioners that oversee that particular parcel. It also specifies additional requirements for the signs that are posted around the property. There's additional signs that are required. The signs themselves are significantly larger and have to be much more sturdy and therefore more expensive. So the proposal before you today is that the application fee be increased from the current $500 to $2,000. The reason for this is preliminarily or primarily because of the publication of the newspaper. Because our plan of services is fairly detailed, the typical plan of service is about 14 to 17 pages long, to publish that as well as the resolution, that alone will cost about $1,500 in the newspaper. And then, of course, all the mailings will be significantly more expensive as well as the signs. And so this proposal for the $2,000 annexation fee will just barely cover the city's hard costs. It won't account for any of the staff time, but we don't want to increase the fee too much and disincentivize annexations. So with that, I'm available for any questions or comments you all may have.
Any questions?
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. We'll move to approval of the Greenways, Blueways, Bike Ways Master Plan.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. Today, we are bringing you the update of the Greenway, Blueway, Bike Way Master Plan. 2013, we originally did this plan, and 10 years later, Murfreesboro's changed quite a bit. So last year, we began the process of updating this plan. We consulted with Kimley Horn to help us with this process, and this guide serves as a transportation implementation and recreation connectivity. So without further ado, I'm going to bring up Alicia Ely from Kimley Horn to give you a really quick overview of the plan.
Thank you, Rachel. Got just a few slides here to share. All right. I was asked to be very brief, so we'll hit the highlights here. A lot of effort from staff. We appreciate the partnership from multiple departments helping through this. This is essentially the table of contents. We looked at both the 2013 previous plan, current conditions, how Murfreesboro has grown since then. We've looked at what those needs and future analysis looks like. We had some community engagement opportunities, and then ultimately, we proposed a network of facilities and helped staff prioritize what those need to be moving forward for the next 10 years. We looked throughout the city, key critical destinations, parks, schools, community centers, a lot of key facilities there, ultimately looking at what those needs look like. And we identified five key areas in the city and broke those down throughout the planning process. Our first piece of community engagement was an online mapping tool. We wanted to hear from the community of what their needs were, what their frustrations or safety concerns were as well, and so we used Wiki Mapping. Summary here, ultimately, all of those orange lines were facilities that the community identified as needs and priorities throughout the city of Murfreesboro moving forward. Throughout the community engagement and our analysis of the needs, we created a proposed plan. This is the summary of that. But again, to dive into the details, we use these critical areas of the city to dive into more detail. Areas A through F here on the map, and I will just show you again for brevity purposes. Here is an example of what that looks like. So each of those areas, we broke down into what those projects look like. Essentially, the dots on the map are key destination items or key needs. The green are trailheads, either existing or proposed, and then blue are existing or proposed Blueway trailheads as well. And the different color of lines are essentially different facility types, whether they're Greenway, Blueway, Bike Way, Bike Lane facilities, existing and proposed. We really wanted to dive into those details, and allowing these six areas throughout the city allowed us to do that. And so we created these recommendations alongside staff and brought those before the city. We had an open house before a council meeting in City Hall in the open rotunda area had a great turnout. We had all of these area maps in detail printed out. We had open comment cards. We had staff before us to facilitate any questions and comments. Got a lot of great feedback ultimately that we did change some of those. We added a lot of needs that maybe were missed as well, and so that was a great opportunity last year in September that we got a lot of great input. Working with staff, we also identified what, essentially, how are we going to prioritize these, right? There's a lot of lines on that map. How do we, where do we start, right? We don't want this plane sitting on a shelf. And so we looked at priorities such as connectivity, accessibility, safety, and cost, and we gave a score to each of those projects. So along the top, you'll see numbers 1 through 25. Those were the specific or individual projects that we identified being proposed, and each one of those got a score for each of those categories of priority. And ultimately, at the bottom, you'll see that total score there, and that's how we essentially help prioritize staff in funding low, mid, and long range or high priority projects. So out of those 25 projects, we created short term, meaning those highest priority projects. And essentially, the biggest theme here is these are projects that the city has already funded or approved, and so these are actionable, these are tangible projects that are already moving forward, and those are those short term projects listed before you. Midterm were projects that are not necessarily funded but were high priority in regards to safety or one of those connectivity or other categories that got a very high score, that these are those midterm projects that need to be considered next for funding or design projects. And then finally, the long term, the remaining projects that may be scored lower or maybe more complicated, needing right-of-way acquisition or higher project costs, that these are ultimately those long-term priorities moving forward for the city. Again, a lot of information, a lot of hard work with staff. Happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Back to your matrix that showed the, here we go. So what's the difference between a 1, 2, and a 3?
Sure. So we've got that written out in detail in the plan, but essentially, for each one of these, we were assigning a number, right, to get to a total score. So if something is very high in connectivity, it would have gotten more points than not. The zeros are essentially this project doesn't provide that very well, if that makes sense.
Okay. And the 3 would be?
Pretty high. So along the left side there for connectivity, let's say if something got a 3, it's connecting a lot of facilities. It's connecting multiple schools or multiple parks or multiple commercial districts. For accessibility, what's the likelihood or how many things is this providing connectivity for? And safety, so a 0 would be this is not an ideal scenario for someone on a bike or a pedestrian. And then cost, obviously, the lower the number, the higher the cost there versus not. So the more points it's scoring, the more favorable it is in those categories.
And next, last question, the schools. Were you looking at the city schools or county schools?
We overlaid all schools there. Yep. Yes, sir.
And then the last question, what's your top five projects? I mean, that last slide showed them, but if you got a grant for $10 million, which one would you attack first?
Sure. So these short term, my understanding is these are already moving forward, and so from a grant perspective, if you're applying for a new project, I would think that you would start with this, which is a pretty short list, right? These are all priorities that are not yet in the queue for funding.
Have we ever done anything, a master plan like this before, and how long ago was that we did?
We did this plan in 2013, and then this is the first update for a plan like this.
I want to applaud folks because this has been a year process of gathering, or more, I guess, in gathering all this information. It was, especially when you're talking about these kind of dollars, to have a list of priorities and have that community engagement as well, I think it's very, you need to be applauded for the work that's done. And, you know, like they say, a failure to plan is a plan to fail, and it looks like we've got a plan going forward, and I appreciate everybody's work on this. Over 100 pages. If you can't get sleep at night and you're looking for a tight way to get to sleep, no, it's a lot of good, it is a really good document. I really appreciate the work that went into putting it together.
Thank you.
Well, I just looked it up. On page 81 of the document, and that's page 86 of your, has the scoring descriptions and the valuation criteria. If you want to look at that.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Adam?
If I could just add a point of clarification in terms of exactly what action staff is seeking here. When this was approved by Planning Commission back in June, it formally became part of, it became incorporated in the city's general plan. So, and it did not come, that approval did not come with a request from Planning Commission that City Council actually approve it to make it part of the general plan. It is already part of the general plan, just as its predecessor from 2013 was part of the plan. All we're really, all staff is really seeking here is that City Council state their support and endorse the plan. So if the motion is stated as move to support this plan as opposed to move to approve this plan.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Just for clarification, and I'm fully supportive of this plan, but in situations like that where, you know, maybe a study's been done, like the bottoms or North Highland, and the Planning Commission were to adopt something, and maybe we don't agree with it, what happens if we just said we don't agree with this now? And it's already been adopted and it's part of the general plan?
I think that would be, if at that point, at that point in time, I think we probably would have staff probably go back to the drawing board and come back to something to Planning Commission. Now, there is, and this is all governed by the city zoning ordinance, there is a procedure where when Planning Commission approves a general plan or a plan that's being incorporated into the general plan, that they can also seek, in that resolution, seek council approval of it before it becomes part of the general plan, but that was not sought, that was not part of that resolution at Planning Commission.
I'm not trying to be a control freak, but I think on these large projects, like, you know, I would argue that bikes and greenways are two of the most important things we have in our parks and recreation system that we consistently hear from our residents. How great the Greenway is, I think in situations like that, it would be applicable to ask that a recommendation is sent to the governing body to get approval as opposed to a looksee. And I'm not saying that that hadn't happened here, but at some point, thinking 10 or 15 years down the line, what happens if the Planning Commission approves something that the governing body didn't necessarily want to do? Then we have to rely on the planning staff to go back and try to get that change through the Planning Commission. It just seems like it's, just like public hearings for rezoning, we, those don't have to be sent to the City Council, but we've had a longstanding tradition that we still send those to the City Council for a second process. It would be good to do that with these things as well.
I agree.
All right. We have a motion?
Motion to support this document.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater. Ms. Gales Harris.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll move to item four, Authorization Acquisition of Downtown Properties. Darren.
We have a census update.
Sorry. I'm sorry, I skipped three. Fiscal year 25 special census update and IT Support Services contract. Sorry, Sam.
Oh, he's taking that personal.
He marked it off.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council are here to give you a quick update on special census and then also ask you to take action on a support services contract. I'll bump through just a couple of points to update you on where we're at on the special census. So we have proposed to conduct a special census this fall, leading into a March timeframe when we turn those results over for audit, and the opportunity on that is to impact next FYI's, next fiscal year's revenue from the state shared revenue sources. Our current certified population is 152,769. That's based on the 2020 federal census, and our state shared revenue estimate from that, according to MTAAS, is $175 per person per year. For the city of Murfreesboro, that's about $26 million, $27 million per year in state shared revenues that come to us throughout the year. Finance publishes that update monthly for you on showing the progress on those state shared revenues. That's going to be state sales tax, gas tax, and mixed drinks tax, some other things like that that are shared back with the communities in Tennessee. Our goal this year is to add 20,000 to our count. We think from our building permits and natural migration and birth that we can exceed that number. That would result in a projected 3.5 million per year over and above our 26 million, so about a 10%, 15% increase. Our activities will include, the heavy lift would be a website form that we would direct people to, to fill that out, and all we're asking for is the address and names of persons that reside there. It is not as extensive as the data and the request for the federal census. One of our big ticket items for expenses will be mailouts. We project we have 70,000 separate addresses in Murfreesboro that we'll need to reach out to, and so historically, we've mailed two to three mailings to all or most of that address pool. Those can be, so that'd be a sizable cost. Things that we have resources for today that we didn't have in 2017 is certainly a more significant media and social media presence and using things like directed social media ads. It can be very effective in especially reaching a younger target demographic. And then with the last census we conducted, the fire rescue department was instrumental in helping us get over the hump, so to speak, with some door-to-door work, and we also incorporated some public safety items in there, checking for smoke detectors and offering to install smoke detectors for homes that may not have had them, and they were very instrumental in that. Last year, or last time, we planned to use them here. Target is to go live in October, and then we are required to submit it for audit by March the 1st. Those results are then turned over to the State of Tennessee Data Center, the Boyd Data Center up at UT. They revise our certified population and share that with the state, who then builds it into the state budget for the next fiscal year. The primary lift here will be done by city staff. We do have a couple of contracted consultant employees, and then we've also anticipate bringing on a couple of part-time data entry people to help processing some of the returned postcards. And with that, I'll answer any questions about the special census before I discuss the action item. And if you have no, go ahead.
Is it going to be mailed in their tax rolls? Is it going to sit and sent out as part of their tax notice? I mean.
The mailings?
Yeah. How are you going to capture everybody, I guess?
So we'll use all of these. We'll start with an online form. That'll be our heavy lift, and we'll publish that online form along with a very significant kickoff with some promotional information, signs around the county, around the city. We'll partner with our departments and other agencies, including Water and Sewer, CUD, Murfreesboro Electric, using all of those formats to contact our residents. The mailings, again, we're trying to get this in front of people as many ways as we can. We know the mailings are somewhat effective based on our last time. The, I think we received, we put in 25,000 individuals, added to the census from our results from the mailing last time, and so we feel like that's still an effective way to do it. We're excited about perhaps social media targeted ads because we can hit specific geographies and demographics with that, using Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, to put those ads in front of a demographic maybe that doesn't answer, that doesn't, they don't go to their mailbox, you know, maybe they don't respond to online ads, maybe they get an electronic bill from their utility provider. Then we'll partner with our departments as well, and so between our various departments, we have contact with our citizens on a daily basis. We'll be using the Parks and Rec Department, for example, the Building Codes Department, the Planning Department, where we have a high volume of customer interactions, and we'll use those as opportunities to make contact with our citizens, encourage them to fill that out.
Any questions for Sam?
I have a question. How many people do you think live in Murfreesboro? We could save a lot of time and money if we could just go ahead and...
Just go right to that. Mayor, we've added, let's see if I can remember this number, 7,300 residential units since our last federal census. We average about 2 and 1/2 people per resident, so just the growth from people moving into those new units is about 15,000. I think we were way undercounted the last time we counted, so I think we were several thousand short there. And then we know there's been some additional growth due to birth over death and also to migration into our community, and that adds up to several thousand more. So I think, honestly, I think we're north of 180,000, and it really wouldn't shock me if we were closer to 190. We also know we missed 30,000 addresses that did not report last time, and so we're going to target those areas specifically with extra efforts, see if we can get something out of there. Our data team, our IT folks and our GIS folks working with utilities and city schools, we were able to enter at least one name for each one of those addresses because of utility bills and information from our school enrollment where we knew we had city students living in those homes, and so we were able to recover some of those, but we were putting in one name where we feel like there was perhaps three or four names that need to be reported on each of those addresses.
But you think that we're closer to 175 is where we are right now?
Yes. And with 70,000 residential addresses, we know we have, looking at that math, that pushes us into that 175 range easy.
All right. Any questions for Sam? All right. Sam, what's the action item?
And so we do have a IT services contract with Castaway Technical Services, and I think the name of their staff is Skipper and Gilligan, but we'll catch that in a minute. Couldn't wait to tell that one. It's for IT Support Services with Castaway, and they'll be helping our IT and GIS department in the back-of-house work that we have to do for setting up the online forms and then managing that database through the process, getting to an ultimate spreadsheet we'd turn over to the state. It'll be less than $50,000. We'd add that to the scope of an existing contract we have, and I'd ask for your approval of that today.
I made a note in the bike paths and greenways that 30, what was it, half of our population is between 20 and 54, and those who laughed at Skipper and Gilligan are definitely in that 50-plus range. All right. We have a motion. Or excuse me, we have a recommendation. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right. Now we'll move to item four, Authorization Acquisition of Downtown Properties. Darren.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to present this to you. What we're asking for your consideration today is acquisition of a property to address downtown parking needs and other future public use. We've identified an area, lots 1, 2, and 3, in the downtown Murfreesboro area. This constitutes the entire downtown block that's basically bordered by Lidle Spring College and Church Street, so we're asking you to approve the acquisition of those, of that block for parking and future public use through negotiation, and if necessary, through use of eminent domain.
Any questions?
We need downtown parking.
Yes, sir.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right. We'll move to workshop item five, T.DOT I-24 Choice Lanes Presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tennessee's first proposed choice lane project would construct new optional choice lanes on I-24 between Nashville and Murfreesboro. The proposed I-24 Southeast Choice Lane Project would address travel time reliability and regional connectivity issues along approximately 26 miles of I-24 by providing passenger vehicle and transit riders with an effective transportation alternative. To present the Choice Lane Project, we have Rebecca Hammond, who is the T.DOT Public Private Partnership Communication Officer, as well as Brian Ledford, who is the Public Private Partnership Executive Director. And for General T.DOT Projects, we also have Jay Norris, who's the Region 3 Director, his team members here. So I will turn it over to Rebecca.
When we were hearing the census numbers, Rebecca asked me how many of the 180,000 folks pass up I-24 every morning and every evening, and we watched them on the SmartWay cameras, and that's what we're trying to address. I'm Brian Ledford. This is Rebecca. I just want to kick off by giving a little preface of why are we doing this? Why are we talking about user fees for a major project like this? And just to set the stage, the, if you see the full outline of the state of Tennessee, that's supposed to represent about a 30-plus billion-dollar need of projects that have been identified. These are good projects. That doesn't, that doesn't count all of the annual state of good repair, maintenance of our pavements and our bridges. This is 30 billion-plus of good projects. The entire corridor that we're studying, that we're doing NEPA, environmental work on right now, is probably a 5 billion-plus project. The red circle represents T.DOT's annual budget, $1.2 billion. That's... project. The red circle represents T.DOT's annual budget, $1.2 billion. That's supported by gas taxes. That's our total annual work program. About half of that is state of good repair, resurfacing bridges, mowing. The other half is for projects. So, about a $600 million a year budget to address projects, the need, the I-24 corridor obviously is not going to get done based on that type of a funding paradigm. There are a lot of projects out there that we need, and a lot of them are in the area of Murfreesboro. They're simply not funded under the existing scheme. And so, what a lot of other states have done is look to the private sector to finance mega projects. And I say this as a mega project because the biggest project that T.DOT has ever awarded is $186 million. The first phase of this corridor will probably be $2.5 billion. So, we're talking about more than 10 times the size of the largest project that T.DOT's ever awarded, just to give you the scale of this. So, in a public-private partnership, the, our enabling legislation allowed for the charging of user fees to pay for additional optional lanes. And that's what we're talking about. All the lanes that are there today will be there when this project is done. They'll remain free to use. These are additional lanes where folks can choose to use the lanes to pay a user fee. And that's how the private partner recoups their investment. So, that's the main framework that talks about the why and the reality of funding. And I will turn it over to Rebecca to talk about things that are more fun than what I just talked about.
Thank you, Brian. He's going to stay with us as long as possible before he heads off to another meeting. But as they mentioned, my name's Rebecca Hammons, the P3 Communications Officer. I'm not going to take us back to the beginning. We've heard the why. We know why this is so important and hopefully how we plan to deliver it with our public-private partnership. But what I am going to ask, just to kind of get a base knowledge, is how many folks in the room, if you could just raise your hand, have actually experienced or used a choice lane? So, in theory, you know, an express lane somewhere. Okay, majority of folks. This is not a new concept. So, I'm not going to, you know, bore you with how an express lanes work. I'll just hit the high points, and then we can take questions as we go through. Speaking on a public-private partnership, so last year, the Transportation Modernization Act passed. It did several things, but really, it enabled the use of public-private partnerships. As Brian mentioned, the state will enter into a partnership with the private sector, and they will do all of those things there. They will design, build, finance, operate, and maintain this facility. A few things I want to make clear. Yes, they will do all of those things, but the state will keep ownership of the facility itself. Throughout the years of the contract, that private sector partner, though, will be doing those items so that it's not being done by the state. It's a risk-revenue model. So, all, majority of the risk is put onto that private sector so that the state can deliver a project of this size. It also does those things there that you see. It frees up state dollars to spend on other projects. As Brian mentioned, this is a situation where we would not be able to fund projects or project of this size. We would really not be able to tackle the congestion along this corridor without this model and without leveraging the private sector. And also, I'll point out, that last point accelerates the project delivery. By leveraging the private sector, we can bring innovation to the table and make sure that a project of this size, if its complexity, won't take us an additional 10 years to deliver, something that may have happened if the state tried to take on in a traditional delivery method. So, we all know what an express lane is. Well, what are choice lanes? Essentially, they are the same thing. But we want to stress that this is new, additional travel lanes. We are essentially widening I-24. You'll see it's two lanes in both directions. That's what we're going to be looking for and doing on the corridor. It is price-managed lanes. They will be used to provide more reliable trip times in exchange for that user fee. And then, again, they're designed, built, financed, operated, and maintained by that private sector partner. Since we've all seen and/or used these, not going to hone in on this point, this is what it looks like, we will aim for something similar to the choice lanes in Virginia photo there with painted stripes. And they're called flexible delineators. Some folks don't necessarily know what that means. But if you're in transportation, it's the large plastic sticks that divide, essentially, that divide those lanes. So, project benefits of a project like this. I want to hone in on two things here. That first one in orange, less traffic. The lanes that are there already will stay there, and they will remain free because these are to additional lanes of traffic. So, really, the overall benefit for everyone is that there will be less congestion because you will see travelers or drivers get into the choice lanes, relieving congestion even in those free lanes. The other one is that one in the middle in navy for trip times. Again, managing lanes, having an active traffic management system with the user fees, it will provide reliable trip times for those who choose choice lanes. So, transit buses will be able to operate in these lanes for free. We are working with WIGO to ensure that they understand the benefits that they'll be able to have from these lanes. I want to focus in on a few here. Of course, more reliable trip times for transit riders and users. They'll be able to utilize that, just like drivers. Improved transit movements and performance. In other states, they saw an improvement in the actual route times. One route, specifically in Georgia, actually was showing up early, often. So, they actually had to adjust their routes and their route timing because they were getting to their destination so early on such a regular basis. And lastly, the bottom right corner, decreased congestion. Because of the benefits and the improvements that they see, more people will choose transit. And so, again, we see or we anticipate decreased congestion, hopefully because more people will choose transit instead of their single occupancy vehicles. These are just some statistics from other states. 73% more customers due to improved travel time reliability. That's huge. A 68% reduction in travel times in ridership quadrupled in first five years, things that we expect to see here in Tennessee. User fees, again, I'm not going to stay on this topic very long. We know how they work. But just something to point out, this is a variable dynamic pricing model, meaning the way that we want to guarantee or make trip times more reliable is by adjusting that price or user fee price. So, they will adjust by the time of day, by demand because of congestion. So, in theory, you'll pay a different amount at different times of day, but it will be because we've got to make sure that traffic is still flowing in those choice lanes. This user fee, like, policy and methodology will be set by the Transportation Modernization Board, which was enacted by the TMA last year.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
Are there other areas that have implemented the variable rates? Because Virginia and Florida is a fixed rate.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. It is something that we see often in the P3 model and choice lanes, but you can speak to that more.
It's really the difference in where a state has built a toll road or they've built express lanes with either their own funding or a different funding model. In a revenue-risk model with the private sector, it's pretty much always a dynamic pricing model. And we see that in I-77, in Charlotte, North Carolina. Georgia just led a big project, I-66 in Virginia. So, these are private, public-private partnerships where it's that revenue-risk model really requires the use of dynamic pricing. The other element of that dynamic pricing is we'll have a minimum speed requirement in the contract with the developer. So, we'll say, you must maintain 45 miles per hour in those lanes, or we'll fine you. And so, the only way they have to ensure that they're maintaining that minimum speed is to raise the user fee such that it doesn't bog down. So, that's how we guarantee the reliable trip times, is using that user fee to control demand, I guess, is one way to put it.
Will that fee still be a flat fee even though it's variable?
No.
Like, if I hop on the interstate in Murfreesboro and it says--
What you see on the gantry when you pass under, whatever the sign says, that's what you'll pay.
Per mile, per--
It's typically a segment from gantry to gantry. So, you would, whatever you see as you pass under the sign, that is what you will pay to some further point. And then you'll see another sign, and you'll have the option of either staying in or not. It's always your choice as to whether you pay the amount on the sign or you choose not to.
But you, I think to answer your point, you will have pre-notification, like, you will know. So, it's not like you're going to pass that point or that mile or two miles and unknowingly get onto another trip that's $5, you know, versus your $2. It will be advertised on a gantry that you pass under, and each driver will be aware of what that particular segment will cost.
I think in some other states, you actually see two segments ahead. You'll see two numbers. And we're early in this, but those will be things that will work out, not just with our developer, but with our own, you know, folks and with FHWA as to what those signs look like. Because we want uniformity. This is not just a project. This is a program. We're going to do this elsewhere. And whatever we do on this first one really sets the stage for what we do going forward.
So, to Jamie's question, Sunpass in Florida, that's a variable rate as well. That's a public-private partnership. What about Dallas, North Dallas Tollway?
There are several, there are several revenue-risk, P3 in place, in North Terrent, NTE.
Okay.
LBJ is fairly recent, yes.
So, this is a common model, is what you're saying?
This has been tried, and frankly, some of the other states that have gone before us in the last 10, 15, 20 years, they stub their toe on some things. And we're trying to avoid some of the mistakes they've made and make sure that we, you know, we've learned from those.
But I guess what I'm getting at is, I've never really noticed a difference in the rate. Honestly, when I'm in Dallas or Florida or Virginia or Pennsylvania, it seems like the rate is basically the same, whether it's 7:00 AM in the morning or 6:00 o'clock at night. Maybe they raise it a little bit, but if they do, how much do they raise it? What have you seen?
You know, I hate to throw out numbers. I mean, we've seen some rates in off-peak times that are, you know, they're, they just, they want somebody to come over there and pay 50 cents or a dollar.
Yeah. During peak time, it might be $1.50.
During peak times, it may be north of that.
Yeah.
It's all about keeping the right number of folks in those lanes so that they're reliable. And the only real throttle that you have on that is supply and demand. It's that dynamic pricing model.
Okay.
So, I drive for a whole month to Nashville, and then at the end of the month, I just get a bill?
Yes. Well, what we'd like you to do is sign up for a transponder. The transponders used to look like a radar detector or something. Now, it's a sticker, RFID, on your windshield. And we're going to be doing a big campaign to push those transponders out because, you know, that's, it's not a bill-by-mail. It's not a license plate lookup. It's a much smoother transaction.
We're still working to nail down the policies and details around all of that. What you've seen in places like Texas and other states is it's essentially like a card that you can load, an account that you can load.
Right.
And then each trip you take is a charge onto your already-preloaded account. I'm sorry. I think, I'm, if it's, did I see another hand? I was going to keep going, but I thought I saw another hand pop up. Okay. All right. Thank you for those questions. Those were great questions, especially while Brian was still with us. So, just to get specific for the southeast corridor, just a project overview of where we are. It's obviously the construction of those new optional lanes. And this map shows you the 26 miles that we are currently studying between Nashville and Murfreesboro. We are currently just in the preliminary design phase in environmental studies. Upcoming activities are environmental documents, policy decisions, RFQ, and then continued stakeholder engagement. Okay. And let me hop out. So, this is a project visualization. This just gives you a look at what the project will-- Oh, there's all the audio.
You'll notice, you watch this, something that will be new to Tennesseans are the, I guess, dedicated access points for the choice lanes. So, if the choice lanes are in the center of the road, you'll actually have on-ramps and off-ramps in the center of the interstate now. You'll have your existing on-ramps and off-ramps to the out. But here, there's one right there. So, those access points really allow you not only to choose whether to use the choice lanes, but you actually get on and off in a different way so that you're not weaving in and out of general-purpose traffic.
What if I'm in the choice lane, and I use a ramp to get on it, and then they're charging an obscene amount? So, I want to get off. Do I have to get off on the ramp? And then--
You'll see the same decision, you'll see the same sign, be able to make the decision before you use that ramp to get on.
Right. But say, I get on, and then a few exits down, I want to get off.
And then it's showing an at-grade merge in and out, just like it was right there. You, we're not going to trap you in there.
Would it be hard for a policeman to stop me for speeding?
Hey, these are--
Important to you, ma'am?
These are Tennessee roads. They'll always be T.DOT right-of-way. And our law enforcement partners will enforce the law. Those little white sticks aren't going to mean anything.
It seems like it just would be more dangerous to stop me and give me a ticket. Can I go faster in those lanes? I mean, some people, some people get on them when they see them. I've seen it in Georgia. They'll get on one, and then before I know it, I'm up here, and they are just zooming past me in that lane.
The law enforcement will enforce speed limits. And there will be shoulders available to them inside the choice lanes.
Yeah. We have been having, so I mentioned continued stakeholder engagement. We have already had two different meetings with task forces in Nashville and in Rutherford County. We're continuously talking with our law enforcement partners because we know that's a major point that you're making, right? We want to make sure that all lanes are safe. And, you know, we're working with them to hear what's best practice from them, but to also make sure they understand what, how these will operate. So, to answer your question, yes, they will have access. They will be enforcing it. We're just making sure to communicate with them on what that looks like.
Do ambulances and emergency vehicles, they use it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah. The transit buses and first responders will all operate for free in the lanes. Yeah. So, early design, as I mentioned, that's the phase we're in now. We have what's called two alternative plans, design alternatives. This is the first one. I'm not going to spend a ton of time here only because these are on our website, our virtual meeting room where all of these documents lived, are, live, sorry, currently, are on our website. You can go through, take a deep dive into what these look like. They will show direct access, as you mentioned, from 24. They'll show exclusive choice lane access points. They'll show whether or not these interchanges are entrance and exit or just entrance only or exit only. So, there are a few differences between the two. Thank you, Brian. And they are, the second one shows, does not have an access point at East Thompson Lane. It does not have the interchange at Waldron Road. And then, instead of South Rocky Fork Road, it has a choice lanes-only interchange at Almaville Road. Again, this is all preliminary. Everything at this point is still subject to change. We're working out of these two design alternatives to present a final preferred alternative. That will be the design plan that we take into talks with that-- That will be the design plan that we take into talks with that concessionaire after our RFQ and RFP process and then those conversations will continue. They will bring things like design alternatives and specs to the table as well. So again, we fully anticipate it honestly to change from these designs.
What, not to interrupt, what...
No, it's okay.
What do you, someone may have asked this while I got up, but what do you think this will do to proposed new interchanges on 24? I know we have one we're looking at, Smyrna has one, but how will this impact those?
Not at all. So we...
Can we get that in writing?
Jay's over there probably shaking his head over there. We are working, I'll say a couple of things and then I may turn it over to Jay, he may have some additional info. So current interchanges will not be touched. The general purpose interchanges that are currently here will remain general purpose, they will not be, like, nothing will be converted into choice lane, no one will lose access this way. We also are making sure to work specifically to not, what is, what is the term? Corner ourselves. We wanna make sure that this project, and this is a contract for 30 or 40 or 50 years. So we wanna make sure that this design is something that can have the longevity of its own contract. We will make sure that it makes room for things like interchanges and improvements and other projects that we know are in our other plans, our tenure plan. Jay, was there anything you would like to add on some of that current, those current interchanges?
So, I'll be brief, Mayor, Councilors, good to see y'all. I know that both the city of Murfreesboro and the town of Smyrna have approached us about interchange interest. We've had discussions with you all about those. I think the thing that we need to keep in mind is that this, the choice lane program is a very large financial, long-term deal and there's a little bit of road wrapped up in it. And part of the deal is the concessionaire is they don't want to have a lot of modifications to the system because it would threaten their revenue. And so if we're going to do that, we would need to make that part of the financial deal we make with them. So as Brian and Rebecca mentioned, this is, we're very early in this process. I don't want y'all to have anxiety about that. Like, we can, we can have discussions about it, it just doesn't need to be forgotten. That's all I would say.
Anything that is currently in the tenure plan...
Oh, yeah.
Will stay in the plan. This is not threatening anything that is currently in our TDOT tenure plan. I'm sorry if I misunderstood.
No, that's great. Thanks, Jay.
This is just a quick look at the proposed typical section. This is an at-grade look, you just, basics, you have your general purpose lane, your HOV lane, your buffer, and then your two lanes of choice lanes. This is a look at the proposed typical section for the elevated lanes. There will be areas, I'm sure many of you know, there's some right-of-way constraints that our design teams are looking at and working around. The answer in some areas will be elevated. Again, all of this is still subject to change, but this is what it may, could look like in the future. And this is our proposed timeline. We are, we are here, you are here. We're in environmental studies. So we have been having those public meetings for our environmental impact studies and I'll show you that here in a minute, but this just lays out a pretty straightforward look of, we had our early environmental studies. Those will continue into next year with our public hearings, RFQ, and then even further out to give you kind of a forecast of where we're going. We hope to have commercial close in '26 and hopefully all going according to plan, construction beginning in '27.
How long would it take once it starts, construction?
I'm gonna answer your question, but not answer your question, only because we don't know.
Highway 99 times five.
We hope, because of the P3 model, we know it will be faster than what we ever could accomplish. So we're looking at possibly five-plus years. Again, that is, there really is no way of knowing because we don't even have a final design, meaning we also don't know all of the additional things. We are eyeballing 2031 or 2032 for completion. We did have these public meetings. Hopefully, some of you were able to attend them and get some information. What I wanna make sure to point out, though, is that if you miss a meeting, it's okay, we have our virtual meeting room on our website. The public comment period in this project continues until September 19th. If you would like a comment to go on the record, now is the time to do it. You can do that on our website, there's plenty of ways that you can do it, you know, on, in the meeting room, you can mail something in, there's a survey you can take. So there are ways to do it, but what we wanna stress is that, especially to the public, but even more to you all, if you wait to give your quote-unquote "public" comment on the record until it is impacting you, you have waited too late. The design will likely be finalized by then and we will be in talks for a contract. At that point, not many things can be changed. So we're trying to encourage everyone that if you would like your voice to have a real impact on the project, now is the time to do it. So as you speak with your constituents, if this is brought up, please encourage them to do so before the 19th. This is just a look at what was shared at the public meetings. Again, all of this can be found on our website, going through the divisions and what we were studying, the impacts, and then of course, the reason why feedback is so important. There's the obvious reason of it is a vital part of our NEPA process. And then the other reason is what I just said, is that this is the time where your voice can actually have an impact on the project. So my plea as a comms officer to you all is that we need your help. Speak to your constituents about this project. We have been in talks with the media, we have things on social media as well, but we, whether you are for or against it, conversations matter and we wanna make sure that people are informed. And social media is not always the best place for everyone to get their information. So what we want to do and the reason we're here today is so that we can equip you with the correct information and hopefully you can pass along as you see fit. So I think that, oh, and then just a way to connect. QR code takes you to the website and then below are all of the ways that you can connect with our team. With that, I will say, I'm happy to take some questions, I know many of them were answered. I will answer them to my best ability, but thank you so much for having us.
I've got one and 840 may be the reason, but it looks like both plans started north of 840 and Murfreesboro being Nashville's largest suburb. Is 840 the reason why it's just not easy to get the lanes over under 840? Like, could we run it to Medical Center?
So I can't speak to the reasoning as far as 840 is concerned, but I can speak to a lot of the reasoning of, this is what our traffic data showed us when they saw the most congestion. A lot of times you see it between, between Bryley and even Waldron or Sam Ridley. So we tackled the corridor really based on our traffic and revenue data and where we saw the worst congestion in our studies. It also is about making sure to hear back from the private sector and industry and making sure, we've been saying, quote, "right-size the project." You know, if we make it too large or too small, then a private sector partner may not want to partner with us. So we have to make sure to take that into account as well.
Right.
Anyone else?
Great information. Thank y'all for taking the time to come down. All right. We'll move over to getting more updates on road projects. So, Chris?
Thank you, Mayor, and start off by saying how much I appreciate TDOT being with us today. It's, our relationship with them has really never been better. They've been very understanding of our request and been able to help us out whenever possible. So thank you, thank you all very much for being here. I appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about some local road projects, a little bit smaller in scale, thankfully. I'm not sure I'd wanna tackle the choice lanes myself, but I'm sure they've got a team up for the task. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to just give you an update on a few projects that we have going on and maybe to consider some options that we're looking at on a familiar project. I would like to thank just Lexi Stacy, she put a lot of this together and she's got a lot more hope in my use of the IT world than I do. So let's see if I can get through this or not. But the projects we're gonna be looking at here listed on the, on the title page, Rucker Lane, Phase Two, Old Fort Parkway widening, new project, West Clark Boulevard improvements, the Blackman-Bertinov-Manson intersection project that's related with the Rutherford County Schools that's going on out in the Blackman area and then also the Asbury realignment. The first project is the Rucker Lane widening, this is Phase Two. If you'll remember, Phase One, we completed a few years ago, that's the section there in blue. That was done more traditional, three-lane section, curb and gutter. It was really through open land and so it was a little bit easier to construct our, I guess what we'd say are more typical project. Phase Two, we've bid that actually a couple of times and honestly, the costs come back quite a bit more than what, than what we were anticipating. A lot of that's got to do with how flat the area is. It's really, we're having to elevate the road about five feet in order to get it to drain properly. So we started looking at some alternatives and just with those, one is Option One, which is the traditional three-lanes curb and gutter sidewalk. Option Two is just to keep the project at two lanes and use at a four-foot shoulder and possibly the use of a multi-use path as well. We're looking at actually just using the shoulder for a, for a path as an option. This is just a graphical representation of what, the Option One there at the top of the, of the slide is that, that project has been bid, came in at $15 million for the entire length. The second option is what I mentioned as far as using, going with just a two-lane section with a, with a paved shoulder. What that does, that allows us to use a ditch section for drainage as opposed to, you know, our curb and gutter and our buried pipes. Still can use or still have some pedestrian facility. You would, you would look at a one-and-a-half to four-foot buffer with a rumble strip there to keep the cars separated from it, but you can see the, really an order of magnitude of over three on the cost of 15 million versus the four-and-a-half million for the, for the second option. Again, this is just a graphical representation of what that could look like. Rucker Lane, we really don't have a, what we would consider a volume problem out there. It's more of what I would consider to, we wanna improve the safety. We've got some drop-offs on the, on the shoulders or off the shoulder. And then we don't have any sort of pedestrian facilities at all. So just an option that we're looking at, we're exploring a little bit more and we may have a recommendation to you for you to consider. If you have any feedback on it either now or later, we'll be, we'll be happy to take that. And I didn't mention, please feel free to stop me anytime during this, during this product, or during the presentation, be happy to answer any questions. I know a project all of you are interested in, the Old Fort Parkway widening, we just approved some additional funding so we could submit this to TDOT as a, as a possible project that we could, we could do in partnership with them. This would be to widen the highway to six lanes with curb and gutter, add a 10-foot multi-use path to the north side and a five-foot sidewalk to the south and then modify the access roads. And here's where the technology comes in, we'll see if it works or not. Just wanted to take you through this project real quickly, some of the, some of the items we're looking at. I will say that TDOT has seen some of these proposed improvements. They have not given their final approval on any of them as of yet, but we have had an initial, at least an initial good discussion with them. If I can kinda drill down to the area that we're looking at. So for about the third or fourth time that I've lived in Murfreesboro, we're gonna move that I-24 ramp coming from, from westbound to Old Fort Parkway. You probably can't tell it from this picture, but we would actually do a raised median which would prevent folks from going from the ramp to, directly to Thompson Lane. Really, our traffic numbers just showing that that, that intersection is just being overwhelmed. And so anything that we can do to, to kinda help to move some of that traffic to another location, we are, we're looking at any opportunities. As you kinda get through the Thompson Lane intersection and you go down, and this is really where some of the, some more of the more significant changes are occurring. We're actually looking at giving, instead of relying on one or two predominant access to the, our, access to the access roads there, we're actually looking at adding some locations. You guys will be familiar with this, this is kind of in the Chick-fil-A area here, we would be adding an access road to that, adding an access road there to the, we'll call it the Walmart area. And then if you'll remember, we're eliminating the turn, the left turn from the ramps on 24 to get into Thompson Lane. So they would actually come down and would do a U-turn at the current entrance to Target and to the Market, Market Square area. I know Councilman Wright has been, is of interest to you. If you'll notice, we are closing, we would recommend closing the access to, to the north there.
Approved.
I thought it would have at least one...
We need to get that to dear Murfreesboro.
Yeah, no doubt.
One supporter for that.
As someone who turns left on Thompson every single day, how, aren't we worried that's just putting a lot of congestion in an intersection that's already also very congested?
So, so that's a great point. So you, what you would be eliminating, though, is you'd be eliminating the actual, the left turns up into the...
If that happens.
Into this area, yes.
If we close that off.
Yeah, you wouldn't, one would not be successful without the other. You would have to close it off and then it would actually become a, strictly a U-turn there. And so you would do a U-turn and then you would, either if you were, say, going to Walmart, you would access that through the Mall Circle Drive entrance here, or you would go back down to Thompson Lane and make a right there.
So we for sure won't prohibit left turns onto Thompson Lane from I-24 westbound if we don't do this?
That, that would, that, yes, they're all have to, would work concurrently with this.
But the other part too, I think, if you go back to the interchange, I mean, we see this and we also see it at South Church Street as well, coming from, coming west. The way that that current interchange is situated, someone is looking left, continuing to go, and we have, I don't know what the number is, but there are a lot of accidents at that interchange where people are rear-ending, not paying attention. So this, this really would keep that from happening. Plus, the other part too, you end up playing Frogger, trying to go over three or four lanes to be able to get over to that Thompson Lane, that Thompson Lane side. It's definitely gonna be inconvenient, someone who's going west and gonna have to go down and do a U-turn, but...
I mean, I'm, I do it every, I mean, I do it every day. I literally play Frogger and then turn left on North Thompson Lane and so I'm fine with it. I literally play Frogger and then turn left on North Thompson Lane, and so I'm fine with going down and making a U-turn, but not if we're not closing off that road, because I'm not making a U-turn in that mess.
Sure, no, no.
Something else almost came out of my mouth. Those of you who know me, I caught it.
I agree, and you're exactly right. I mean, it would all have to work together, or it wouldn't, or you would just be, just transferring the problem from one intersection to the other.
Is Mall Circle Drive private, or do we, who maintains Mall Circle Drive?
It's actually, it's actually public. Well, I'm sorry, Mall Circle Drive, yes, it's public as well, yes.
I guess my question back with the turning left onto Thompson Lane is, most of the time that an ambulance gets off the interstate to go to the hospital, they're getting off at Thompson Lane, not Medical Center. Would we just be telling emergency personnel just to go ahead and go down to Medical Center?
That would, that would be a better option for them, yes. It, I, I'm hesitant, you know, those guys are professionals at choosing routes and, you know, the ways that they want to go. And really, especially, you know, sirens going, nothing would prevent them from making that left turn at Thompson, just on the other side of the median. I think the key thing would be, would be to get the information to them and let them.
But that's a good point. If they're got sirens on, they could turn left on Thompson. They wouldn't have to go down and take a U-turn.
Yeah.
To borrow a siren?
Yeah, you need a siren.
I learned that with the, you know, the recent closure we did on Asbury, talking with Chief McCleskey, he said, "Trust me, Chris, we'll be able to make that turn if we need to," so. Just going down a little bit more with Thompson, a lot of, probably the next big change would be some of the changes that we're doing actually at Mall Circle Drive and at Bridge Avenue. We would specifically, kind of the back entrance to Lowe's and to Target here, we would allow only right outs there or left ends to that roadway. The yellow you see here on the, on the screen is actually a raised median. So we would limit some of that, and then we would actually close off access to the frontage road there and would move that access down again to another mid-block crossing the, of the grassed area there.
Chris, can I, that mid-block crossing, would it be better off to put at Mall Circle in front of where Coconut Bay used to be, where the stoplight can go both directions?
So we looked at that. We, the numbers show that would be better to keep that as a separate, just in order to, just T-intersections just operate so much better for us. I mean, we lose so many phases on our, on our signals there that they wanted, they felt like the traffic would be low enough that they could do that and then, but still keep that as a separate. But we absolutely, we asked them to look at that, and they recommended this configuration.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. The rest of it is pretty straightforward, again, relying on mid-block crossings as opposed to overloading.
I like that. Chris, thank you for your hard work, and this is something on Old Fort Parkway, that you look at how you've designed those additional exits, and that keeps traffic from, really just four intersections that are on Old Fort Parkway.
Yeah, it's, it's different, you know, just the thought with the, having to do the U-turn, something that we're, you know, trying out on Medical Center Parkway now, but it's really something that we're, that we think moving forward is going to be more beneficial for us.
Chris, I think this is great. I guess the question, while the TDOT people are still here, you know, for that stretch, and it gets so busy and so congested, is there any chance of putting any sort of, you know, adaptive signals that's actually able to read the traffic flow and adjust and keep the signal on longer so you can get more cars down the road and onto I-24 or onto Broad? Is there any conversation? I mean, I know it's a state road, but is TDOT, you know, open to that?
Jay or Jim may want to.
And I know for the choice lanes, I was going to ask if Jim Kerr gets a pass, you know, to where he doesn't, you know, pay any tolls or anything.
Yeah, that's understood.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. He pays double. So I want to start by saying this, is I grew up on Rucker Lane. I was born and raised there. I'm a graduate of campus Central Middle School in Riverdale, and so I'm one of y'all, and I've done a million trips.
So you're going to fix all our roads, is what you're saying?
I'm very familiar with this section. The adaptive signals are actually part of our smart corridor plan. That would be Phase Three, where we would connect all together. But I want to brag on Chris and Jim, they've got a very forward-thinking group with their signal group, and they do some very, very smart things. And so I don't think we're too far behind on that. I think they're doing a good job. I personally think that, I know there was a gentleman that spoke about the census a couple, a few minutes ago. The growth that Murfreesboro has is unprecedented. I mean, it's just remarkable. And this corridor, you're squeezing about as much as you possibly can out of it without rethinking some things. You know, the thing that, in communities like this, is that it's really, really important that you balance growth with traffic operations and that developers are doing their part, and we're doing some smart things. And so the things that Chris is proposing here, I think this is a good project. Let me start by saying that. I think it's, I think it's smart, I think it's thoughtful, and I think it's a good way to tackle it. The, there's a lot of friction currently with Thompson Lane being so close to interstate and the frontage roads, and the things they're looking at doing are eliminating friction.
Okay.
So I think it's a smart approach.
Okay. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Just a couple of other projects real quick. This is a new one, want to introduce to you guys. It's the West Clark Boulevard improvements. This is from Memorial to Northwest Broad Street. This will include our typical curb and gutter section, and yes, it does take out the, we're proposing to take out the infamous S-curve. We honestly just think people are avoiding this route because of the S-curve and the difficulties that it has. We're currently working with a consultant on the proposal for that and hope to have a design contract to you all very soon.
I grew up in the middle of the S-curve.
Really?
You know, I was on that S-curve this morning, and I promised like 65% of the people, even the person who was behind me, it's just nature that when you make a right, you turn on your right blinker and you turn on your left blinker.
Why not? It's 90 degrees, right?
That fence has got railroad ties behind it, so if you run into that fence, you cause some damage.
That's a good project.
One of the feedbacks we got when we were looking at improvements to Jones Boulevard, which we're still doing that in sections as far as pedestrian improvement, why aren't you doing anything to West Clark? So this is a, the pedestrian improvements, we think, will be a benefit to heavy residential area. The project here, Blackman-Bertinov-Manson intersection, of course, this is, it's, it's a project that's really been brought to the forefront with the Rutherford County School construction that's currently ongoing, or, yeah, it's ongoing, scheduled to open August of next year. This is a little, little different for us as well. Of course, this is the store here at the one corner. This approach all has curb and gutter sidewalk streets, and we'll keep that all, we'll widen it, but we'll keep that same type of typical section. The other three approaches will actually have just shoulder sections. That'll give us the ability, again, to not have to do the underground drainage and to, honestly, to get the project done more quickly. We're going to, we expect to go to construction on this by the first of next year, and our current timeframe is to have the project completed before, before the school opens up in August. Lot of lanes, very wide, modern intersections, getting ready to come to that area.
Chris, quick question on that, and I know we're going to talk about schools later on down the line, but when we're looking at the reason for this specific interchange, what was going to be the control delay? Do you remember, we looked at that traffic study?
15 minutes, was that right? To get through there? Yes, it was going to be, it was going to be very, very long. It was crazy. It was, honestly, it was the longest delay I think I've ever seen in a, in a traffic report. It was just, it backs up now, and certainly there's some city development that's out there, but when you look at the peak times, especially in the morning, you know, folks coming from, coming from Veterans Parkway, I know a lot of the students will be coming from that direction, but also maybe from Florence, from the Florence Road area.
At Rutherford Collegiate across the bridge now, so there's a lot of, lot of traffic out there. I just didn't even want to look, when you drive out through there, you think that there's not much going on at that intersection, but there's a lot that's going to be occurring.
It's a, it was a crazy delay, and to their credit, the county is moving forward. We had recommended improvements to, at Blackman and Baker, and we've got word that Mr. Brooks is looking at ways to improve that as well. The Asbury Lane realignment, this has been ongoing for a while. We've been in discussions with the, with members of the, representatives of the Williamson Family Farm. We think that we've got a, an alignment that, I know it's a very unusual alignment with the, with the roundabout here, but really, we were, you know, trying to miss the majority of their operations right here in the center. We weren't able to get enough separation, and they also have a kind of a wedding venue right in here. So this is something that, you know, from a geometric standpoint, that works for us, and it still lets them maintain their future use of the, of the farm. This is pretty much, this alignment's, like I said, it's pretty much set. We are starting the appraisal process on that so we can move forward with purchasing what we need for the right-of-way, and then hopefully go to construction in 2025.
So, Chris, on that, though, there's been a lot of discussion on Asbury Lane over the last month, and this has been a topic, I know, at least for five or six years. This will close Asbury Lane, correct?
Yes, yes. It's operating as a right-in, right-out now, but this will, you can see, we will, we'll actually cut through the existing Asbury, and it will completely close that. And again, this is, you know, going back to our partnership with TDOT, one of the concerns, they're actually looking at widening the ramp here from 24 to Medical Center Parkway. Well, one of the concerns that we both had was the weave problem from people coming off that ramp. If you remember back to our Thompson Lane example, this is a lot shorter distance there, but the weave from people coming on the ramp and wanting to turn left onto Asbury. So trying to get them down to a signalized intersection where this, where the interchange will operate correctly and keep traffic moving. And it's been, we've worked with the Williamsons for about a year now, trying to come up with this, and something that works, works for them as well. And with that, that's the projects that we had set. We've also got some additional slides. If you've got any other questions, we might can pop those up there, or I'll be happy to give you an update on any, anything that we've got going on.
Any questions for Chris? Chris, thank you for your hard work on this.
Thank you very much.
Darren, for our city TV team, I think it'd be great if there was a way to maybe take Chris's presentation and edit and cut that, where the council can have that, and it would be great to share that on social media, because, I mean, traffic and transportation is really the number-one question we get asked about, and being able to let people know this is what we're looking at, this is what's coming, would be, would be great.
It will be done. I was plugged, too. I know the city's website just got revamped, and City Traffic Projects has got a prominent location at, folks, update on any of our stuff, we keep that updated regularly.
Okay. All right, we'll move to, thank you, Chris, appreciate your hard work, your team's hard work. All right, we'll move to cable TV changes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. Staff is asking for some direction from the council on changes for future action items and recommendations related to the cable TV franchise. That comes to the city council from the Cable TV Commission. In recent years, the Cable TV Commission has only met once each year. As federal and state laws related to cable TV franchising have changed over the years and things have become more deregulated, there's really less work for the commission to hear and review. Additionally, the local government channel has been in operation now for over 30 years, run by city staff, and they follow a set of programming policies and procedures documents, which are no longer involved, the commission with that as well. Changes in structure would dissolve the commission, and future recommendations related to cable TV franchise such as renewals, transfers of ownership, franchise fee audits, would be presented to the city council by staff recommendations instead of as a recommendation from the Cable TV Commission. I've discussed this change with the members of the commission, and they're supportive of this change if the council decides to go in this direction. And if the council decides to go in this direction, staff would bring this back to a city council meeting in the future to approve various documents that would be drafted by the legal department to make those changes official. Be happy to answer any questions if you have anything.
Bill, do you serve on that commission right now?
I used to, but it sounds like a very reasonable request, so yes, I would be supportive of it, used to.
Not really in action, Adam, but I think, does anyone have any concerns about the recommendation? All right, I think you and Adam have your marching orders, but you're, you understand?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, let's move to amendments to Murfreesboro City Code, Chapter Four, alcoholic beverages.
I want to give you all an update on some of the recent information we've got regarding certificates of compliance and reintroduce you all to ordinance 23030, which, as presently updated, will include some updates to the certificate of compliance application and approval process for the city. To give you a little bit of context, 23030 was originally brought before council at the August 10, 2023 workshop. After some deliberation, it was deferred so that we could talk about some of the issues regarding the outstanding certificates that had not taken an application to the ABC for a license. Fast forward to the July 11, 2024 workshop, where council received the city recorded report of available certificates. Y'all requested some updates on applicable law and some ways that we could move forward with our certificate approval process. We brought three options before council at the July 18 regular meeting. Council deliberated through some of those after the presentation, directed us to get to work on the ordinance subject to receiving additional stakeholder feedback. Quick overview of where we're at now, as we reported back in July, we have 33 total certificates of compliance within the city with a 1,000 to 5,000 cap. We also have some additional zoning and distance limitations in addition to the cap. Currently, our application process is first come, first served. The updated ordinance that we have attached and that with council's direction, we can be ready to bring back at a future regular meeting, contains several cleanup provisions in it. As you noticed probably in the, in the draft, it's about 22 pages long. The key for today's discussion would be the new provisions that we've added. Adding a lottery system for awarding certificates, adding an expiration to those and creating a yearly window of availability for new certificates as they come up. Notably, based on the feedback that we received, the ordinance does not adjust the cap as it's currently drafted. So to dig into those, those three items a little more, the lottery that we use was modeled after Clarksville's lottery system that they use that we presented at that July 18th meeting. We use a 20-day window that will be advertised by the city recorder's office for the available certificates. If the amount of applications we receive in that 20-day window exceed the certificates, then we hold the lottery at a council meeting. Selected applications from that lottery would then be immediately considered and voted on at that meeting. Certificate expiration, we talked through different formats for that. Different cities use different expiration periods. Some are 90 days, six months, one year, 18 months. They're kind of all over the board. But talking with staff in the finance department, we thought it would be best for Murfreesboro to set that expiration at June 30th of the year following the year that the certificate was approved. So let's say certificate gets approved in August of 2024, that certificate would expire July 30th, 2025.
June 30th.
June 30th, sorry. I keep saying July for some reason. So with that, that would give staff enough time to keep track of that license. It gives, it gives the applicant about a year to take that certificate to the ABC to start the license application process. And then once they file, once they apply for the license with the ABC and the ABC grants that license, then under ABC regs, they have a year after that approval to actually construct their building and go into business. So this would effectively give them almost right around the two-year mark to apply with us, apply to the ABC, get into business. In addition to that July 30th window, something else that we took out of Clarksville's playbook was that the certificate would automatically expire if the applicant was convicted of a felony between the time of the certificate approval and their application to the ABC. As I stated, that provides some operational efficiency to the finance department so that we know with certainty when any given certificate would expire. So that way we don't have different dates that we're having to keep track of. Also by using the June 30th, that allows the expirations to be reportable on the July report that y'all receive every year. One notable thing that, that has happened in the interim, I guess it was around the end of August, we received a communication from the ABC where they expressed concern with the length of time that one of our outstanding certificates had been outstanding prior to the applicants coming to the ABC. So with that, while the ABC wasn't committal one way or the other on, on the issue, the direct issue of expirations, we felt like that concern that they expressed lends credence to the idea of reinstituting an expiration for our certificates of compliance.
Would our expirations retrofit the ones that are already approved, or they have to abide by the old rules?
We have also put in an amortization provision in this ordinance to where any, any certificate that was approved prior to, I think I put in, it's an arbitrary date that I put, I think it was November 1st, 2024, would expire on June 30th, 2025. So basically, they, they get a year from, from enactment to, to go to the ABC, so that that puts everybody on, on a level playing field at that point. I will say with that, with this entire expiration scheme and with the recent legislative updates, we're in somewhat uncharted territory regarding expiration. So any, any of these actions that we take, be it the expiration date in general or this amortization provision, could carry some level of risk with them. But as I said, I think based on the feedback we've received from council and staff, we feel like the, it's, it's an appropriate risk to take to include it in this ordinance. Regarding certificate availability, the ordinance also sets up what we call an open enrollment style, where with that, that window, that, that window would occur at the same time every year after the city recorder gives the report on available certificates. And if there were a scenario where a certificate was either revoked or surrendered or expired or something like that, that, that certificate would not become immediately available. It would not be available until after the city recorder gave the report. That way, we don't have a scenario where a certificate becomes available in May and all of a sudden we have to do a new lottery system, re-advertise, that sort of thing. It provides consistency and certainty for applicants to know, you know, this, this same period, probably roughly at the beginning of August every year, they'll have their opportunity for any available certificates that come out. So with that, I'm available for any questions or if the council would like to deliberate and give staff further direction on the forthcoming ordinance.
I think in July, when we met, there were several council members that said that they would want to look at just free market, no limitations on licensing. Was that looked at?
That was looked at, and that's, if, if that's the, the direction that, that council wants to go, we can, we can have an alternative form of the ordinance that removes the cap. I would say without the cap, you probably don't need the lottery system. The expiration could be...
I think the expiration's good no matter what, but maybe no cap instead of the lottery system. That way, it kind of kills two birds with one stone.
I, I had talked about that. I'm, you know, after talking with people who are in the industry, I'm, I'm fine with how we've got this and maybe review it, you know, after a year and see if, if it, this worked, you know, if we don't have people racing at City Hall. Or we could initiate the Hunger Games for liquor store permits next year, so.
That would work.
That's fair.
Yeah, I agree.
Because I think, Leslie, you can, you can fill them in too. I think with, with the certificate that recently became available, we did have multiple applications, applicants interested, but I don't think we had the same violence that we had last year.
No, we did not. And actually, there was only the one applicant. It was actually the applicant that didn't get it last year. But we didn't have any other, anybody else come to the window after him.
So do you need this as a, an action item, or is this just to be able to put on a future council meeting?
It would go in a future council meeting. We can bring it back next Thursday, at next Thursday's meeting, but we just wanted to present it for your comment before we, you put it to you for a vote.
So if you have any comments about this, if we don't have them now, between now and our next meeting, please talk to Adam or Rome, or talk to Adam, who will talk to Roman. Thank you, Roman. Appreciate your hard work. All right, let's move to item nine, approving and permitting Rutherford County school construction. Darren.
I am going to pass this off to Mr. Kevin Jones and Mr. Ben Newman. We did, well, I'll say that. We did, we've heard from several council members about, I guess, building permit fees that are assessed to educational facilities and kind of an overall general discussion and concern about maybe development standards that are applied to educational facilities. And so we really wanted to bring up kind of our process and the standards and have you all just, again, no action item is, is requested, but we wanted to kind of give you some background and historical perspective for you all to, to think through. And we can, we can obviously react to however, what direction you all want us to go in. But Kevin, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Gilligan, you want to come up here? Don't leave me on this tour by myself.
That's good.
So again, I'm Kevin Jones, Director of Building Codes. You got Mr. Newman with planning. We're just kind of, Darren already laid that out for you, just here to get, kind of give you guys a background on it. So I kind of broke it down just to kind of show you guys. I think you guys may have a little more detailed spreadsheet, which I have that if you'd like to look at as well. This first slide, it's just the city permit fees for the last nine years. These are the top examples. Overall, we've done 17 total city projects for schools the past nine years. Like I said, those projects were $35 million and equal to $135,000 in permit fees. Obviously, you can see the top examples. Those four alone were $127,931. Also, if you're an educational occupancy, you have to go to the state fire marshal as well for review. I've always, you know, I'll say that line, you have to get state fire marshal approval as well. And they'll come back and the plans are stamped. So I actually called an architect this morning and the state just to kind of double check, and I, I was kind of curious what the fees are for the state fire marshal office. So we actually played, we actually paid $40,000 for Salem Elementary to the state, for the state to review that. We are in exempt jurisdiction, which means we do our own plan review, our own inspections. So if we weren't exempt, that plan review fee would have been $80,000 to the state fire marshal. But since we are exempt, it's, it's half the fee. So we paid $40,000 for the state to review on top of, we also reviewed it as well, and we paid $85,000 to ourselves to get the permits. So here's Rutherford County permit fees over the night, the past nine years as well. $127 million in projects. They've paid $475,000 in permit fees. 54 total projects. Many of those projects are portables. Obviously, these top examples, these are the top four right here. So these four projects alone paid $430,000 of that $475,000. So those account for 91% of the total permit fees over the last nine years. So over the last nine years, you could, you could average that out to about $50,000 a year the county is paying on average. But again, these four projects alone account for 91%. So generally, this is kind of how building codes operates. Permit fees will not be waived and cannot be waived currently through adopted ordinances and fee schedules without an agreement waiving these fees. Permit fees are collected for any educationally used projects, whether they are state, such as MTSU, county, or even our own buildings. You can see we obviously pay our own fees if, if the building is to be built within the current city limits. Permit fees are not generally collected for educationally used projects outside of current city limits that will be on city sewer. Example, Plainview, Rock Vale, we did not collect any building permit fees on those schools because they were currently there outside of the city limits. So that's kind of what I have on as far as the general permitting. Be happy to answer any questions. I'm going to turn it over to Ben, let him finish, kind of go into the, the planning aspect.
How do you come up with the fees?
It's just an adopted fee schedule that we currently have.
And the reason I ask that is because in some instances on what you had sent us, you look at Riverdale and Oakland for their most recent additions. Overall, it looked like from a percentage of the cost of the project, it was like .0034, pretty consistent. If you looked at a private entity, and I consider a booster club in a, in essence a private entity, it was .005 for say a football field house or something like that. So...
It's a graduating scale.
Okay.
So the higher the cost, that permit fee starts to come down on the back end, right? It's so much for the first thousands or whatever. So that's why you see a lot of these, the portables or whatever, even though it could be a 10,000 or whatever, there's a standard 593. That's almost kind of the flat fee. But the higher, the higher, so once you get up into the $54 million Oakland high, you're, you're getting a break on the back end kind of as that graduating scale starts to take into effect.
But it's still a pretty significant fee at the end of the day. I mean, it's, a county student most likely has been a city student, just like all our city students are going to be county students.
Correct.
So it's all the same tax dollar. A Rutherford County resident or a city resident, it's all the same tax dollars that are being moved around. And I know we'll talk about this further. I just wish that, in a sense, they could be capped further or waived. Because at the end of the day, it's money that could be invested back into a student or invested into other things that goes towards education. That's what I'm getting at.
I understand. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to turn it over to Ben now, or Gilligan.
I, I think that's a good discussion. When we go, Austin, I, I like what you said about moving things around. So that's going to be a, I think that's a good discussion to talk about. Ben?
Skipper.
Ben, welcome to City of Murfreesboro. We're glad you're here.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Austin, this is Ben. He's staff.
This is Ben. You're new, right?
I'm still new.
Okay.
I get to use that card sometimes. Thank you, Mayor and Council, Kevin. And so my part of this is I'm going to talk about development standards and really as they, they apply to schools, not just Rutherford County, but also city schools, private schools, you know, the, the schools that we deal with, and we deal with them equally. And when we look at these development standards, they are standards passed by council. So we really, they are, and we take them as equally important as your other standards with infrastructure and things like that. So parking, buffering, lighting, landscaping, and irrigation, we'll just briefly touch on those. And these are things that we're looking at when the schools are built inside the city or if they're outside the city with a development agreement, we're not looking at those. So first parking, and, and these are, you know, generally the standards here. So kindergarten, one parking spot for every five students. Grades one through nine, two parking spots for classroom or one for each five student in the auditorium. Grades 10 through 12, five parking spaces for each classroom or one for each five seats in the auditorium. When we look at buffering, you know, thinking about what this is, this is required to enhance the privacy and lessen the impact of that more intensive land use to the residents. So, you know, we're really trying to make, make a buffer there so that it's not really interfering with that residential use. An example of this that we're requiring schools to do most, most of the time is that type C buffer. That's a 12-foot wide planting, trees, two rows of trees interspersed, and these are the large evergreens. And then we also have a row of medium growing shrubs. The next buffer up would be, the only difference really is three more feet and larger growing shrubs instead of the medium. And these are recommendations by staff to the planning commission. And so it's sort of a negotiation on where they are, what they are. But we try to get the best buffer we can based on the site layout. Lighting, the focus here really is security, making sure that we're meeting the security goal while creating a pleasing visual environment. We're also looking to get away from spotlights, go into downward facing light. We're also making sure that that light pollution doesn't get outside of the boundary. So .5-foot candle doesn't really mean a lot to you, but what that is, a very low light that's escaping that lot line. And then we're also making sure that it doesn't glare into the right of way. As far as landscaping, making sure that perimeter planting is there, trees placed every 40 feet in the, in the areas. For landscaping in a parking lot, we're making sure that there's a landscape aisle every 12 spaces with shade trees. And that's really to help keep that, the heat down in those parking lots and also help with water quality. We also have base of building landscaping, and that's where there's a row of shrubs, the base of the building, front and sides. Irrigation, you know, that's, it's a lot of money that goes into all those plantings, so we want to make sure that they live. And so we require an irrigation plan to go along with these. And that's an automated underground landscape irrigation system so that these expensive plants will stay alive, thrive, and look beautiful and do their job. So when we're, when we're dealing with these standards, you know, we, we're trying to apply these same standards, whether it's county school, city school, private schools, you know, we work really well with city schools. They've gone through our process a lot. They understand what we're asking for. They come see us early in the process. They come see us early in the process. And the reason for that is we're wanting to make sure that they have adequate funding for the entire project, not just the building or parking lot. We're wanting to make sure that they do meet city standards, and that we communicate early on in the process to set their expectations, help them set their budget, so that it can be a complete project. And we have a really good working relationship with them, and we try to encourage those types of relationships. So when we have schools outside that are city sewer customers, you know, Kevin was, was talking about these fees, permit inspection and fees. Council, last year passed an ordinance that allows those fees to be waived. And that's typically done in a development agreement. So when we have development agreements, can waive those. And, and that's something that, you know, it was done fairly recently. We're seeing some of those come across now where we are, you know, have the ability to waive those fees. So I just wanted to put this language up in front of you, just so that you know it's there. When we have those development agreements, think of Beatty School up Blackman Road. That's a good example where we're really working with them on infrastructure, like Chris was talking about. But, you know, those fees are gonna be waived in that part of the project. And then we're not really looking at our development standards when we have these development agreements in place. And we have several developments that are outside that we haven't looked at these standards. So with that, be happy to take any questions on, on any of these, or skipper over here can take some questions as well.
I got a couple of comments. I'm one of the ones that got it, was wanting to discuss this. On the surface, it's all our tax money, we're moving it from one side or the other. But also, the last three, maybe four years, the county's taken over three million dollars out of our school budget, year after year after year. So I, I'm all for trying to, whether it's waiving or paying them, get refunded back, or whatever the fees. I, I'm, I, I wanna, if they're in the city limits, I wanna keep the standards, the planning standards up. But also, I think we need to have a bigger discussion with the county on another level of, where's our three and a half million dollars?
You're talking about the shared penny.
Right. So, I mean, they can't have their cake and eat it too.
I mean, it's a fair point, Sean, because you're talking about two different funding bodies.
Right.
There's a county funded body, there's a city funded body, and we have taken that hit, it seems, every year. At the end of the day, it's all about the kid.
Right.
And trying to put them in the best learning environment possible. And I just hate to see, you know, fees.
Stopping that.
Yeah, stopping that.
I mean, is that, I mean, all we're doing is moving money from this, I mean, each of, each one of us in this room is a county taxpayer, as well as a city taxpayer.
Yeah.
So all we're doing is moving the money from this pocket, and then moving it over into this pocket. But they're also moving money from one of our pockets to the other pocket, too.
The other thing, I gotta remember to stay close to the mic. The, the other thing, it's a city, it's a county. We're in a much better financial situation, I think, than the county. You know, the county, they're, yeah, and that's, that's all due to you and Jamie, you know, and Madeline, and Bill, and Sean, and staff, okay? But we're in a much better situation, and we haven't approved any charter schools. The county, like it or not, they can say no to it, that charter school comes in, and they're on the hook for it, and they're gonna face an even bigger deficit. So I just think that's an important conversation to have. I guess my bigger, and I'm glad we're having this discussion, whether it's fees, and I don't, and I agree with you all on having standards. But to me, the biggest thing is, hey, get the building up. If it means somebody's gotta wait two years to put in a shrub or a bush, I'm okay with that if they're having financial difficulties.
Although, put a bond out for it.
But, but I think, Austin, and we agree on a lot, this I don't agree with, and I'm gonna tell you why.
Okay.
You know, I'm in the construction industry, and so fees are part of a project.
Yeah.
You know, and so when you look at this total overall fee, this is point oh oh three percent, three tenths of a percent of a project. It, it's, and, you know, look, we can look and say it's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but, you know, I publicly would say this. I was tasked to help build Providence Christians High School, and then also tasked to build their sports facility because we were told, hey, we can't accommodate you at McKnight Park. So, and Jimmy and I have had, Jimmy, thank you for being here. Jimmy and I, we've had this conversation. But those organizations paid those fees. Those organizations paid seven hundred thousand dollars with landscaping. And look, I understand, it's the difference between a private, private and a public, but it's still taxpayer dollars. Taxpayers who live in the City of Murfreesboro are paying that. So, you know, the part that I, I think I'm frustrated about, and, and, you know, we wanna partner with county schools. I mean, Jimmy and I met eighteen months ago and talked about how that we could get, you know, improve our communication and... But, you know, we are shifting from one pocket to the other. But unfortunately, I think, you know, Kevin and Ben and Greg and Sam and Darren have probably spent ten or fifteen hours on this topic over the last week. The taxpayers of Murfreesboro are paying for the work that they did. So when our inspectors go out to those schools, the taxpayer of Murfreesboro is paying for that. So if some reason that there's a deficiency in their budget, and we have to raise taxes, the taxpayer of Murfreesboro is paying for that. So I, I'm, and one of the things I think we need to discuss is, okay, what's, how much is enough? You know, is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars on a hundred, or a fifty-four million dollar project, you know, is that enough? Then maybe that number should be capped at, at a cost recovery.
Well, that, that's kinda where I was going with it when this discussion initially started. We shouldn't be losing money for fees over the county or city schools. So if we've got staff working on fifty hours putting through the permit process and the building process, our time should at least be recouped.
But I think what, I agree, and I think what's gonna happen, that we just have to be cognizant of. That if we start waiving fees, and we pick and choose who we're gonna waive fees for. And if we say, look, you know, Jimmy and his team, they're, they're in a financial issue. They've got eight hundred and seventy million dollars of schools they need to build, every little bit helps, and we say that we're gonna do that, we can do that. Well, then, we're gonna have Middle Tennessee Christian, who's got a huge project that they just finished, and they've got a new project that they've got under construction. And they're gonna come to council and say, hey, you did it for Rutherford County, we would like to have our fees waived. Well, then, you've got XYZ, the hospital comes through, and is like, hey, we're a nonprofit. We're a five oh one C three, and we're providing a community service, and you're, our fees are way more than the fifty-four million dollars. So we wanna, we wanna have those waived. I just think we need to understand what we could be opening up by allowing people to come and petition us to waive fees. Cause I know as a council member, it's gonna be really tough when you've got, I'm gonna use this as an example, Greenhouse Ministries, who just finished their project, and they come to us and say, hey, we want you to waive fees for our project. It's, I'm not saying it's not something we shouldn't discuss, but I'm not in favor of the council having somebody petition us every time they do a construction project, saying that we're in financial trouble and we need, you know, cause here's the bottom line. We may be the ones in, in a couple of years, when we have to build a new school, to be saying, hey, we wanna waive our own fees. So I think it's just something we need to, to, to think about.
Yeah, you bring up good points, all these other five oh one three Cs, and that, I mean, it is a slippery slope. So we could end up with every five oh one three C in town coming to, to ask us for waiving fees.
Well, we're not waiving fees for ourselves. Aren't you saying we're, we're paying for the city schools, we're paying our, our fees to ourselves? So I think there's a bigger, I'd only just caution us that we, the difficult thing, and that we take one issue that doesn't seem fair, and we try to lay it over this issue that doesn't seem fair. And I'd say, let's stay dealing with the particular issue and address that. And maybe just a little bit better dialogue between us and not necessarily the Rutherford County schools.
Sure.
As much as the county commission to understand, cause that's, that's where it's coming from. So let's deal with the particular issue.
Yeah, and both of the issues we mentioned are both coming from the county commission.
Well, but I'm saying, don't try to label, you know, get into that yin and yang of, of that. I don't, I think that's gonna be a difficult thing for us to, then I think you're down a rabbit hole. As opposed to saying, you know, let's, let's deal with the particular issue that's before us, and, and, and not try to link all the things that are happening. A better conversation, you know, about the, the, I think sometimes there's a funding body that needs to be reminded that Murfreesboro City residents are county residents. You know, they need, you know, we need to remind folks of each other that that's the case. You know, that, and, and we are, quite honestly, what, sixty percent of the revenue generated in, in the county is through our municipal.
And to Dr. Sullivan, I mean, I would, he's in a unenviable position because, you know, he's having to go ask for money, and then, I mean, so they're, I, I get where they are. They're trying to stretch every single penny that they've got. But, you know, the part that I get frustrated about sometimes is that, you know, we're always tasked to communicate better and be better partners. And sometimes when you go through, and I'm not gonna bring all this stuff up now, cause I don't think it serves any purpose, but there's a lot of times where we try to do that. And it's like, you know, Lucy pulling the football out on Charlie Brown, and he misses it, and then he comes back, it's like, hey, you wanna do it again? And so I think we all can improve on that communication.
To, to add, Shane, you and I agree a lot on this. I'll disagree on a private school, much like, and I've been a booster club parent, that's wrote a check and put my name on a note for a football field house, and then been hit with fees. I think if it's a private entity or a booster club, and I've been a booster club guy, I, I wouldn't entertain waiving a fee or reducing a fee. I think if it's a public, public school, even a charter school, because those are public school students, it's still, you know, a kid. It's still our kids, city kids, county kids. I'll pick on the county commission a little bit, you know, yeah, they've, they've cut that shared penny, but they've also raided their one seventy-seven fund, you know, the fund they use for maintenance. So the commission will take money from them, and then Dr. Sullivan's sitting there saying, God, I hope the air conditioning doesn't go out, or I hope the freezer doesn't go out, cause then he's in a world of hurt. So it's, it's a good conversation. And I'll, I'll say this from an efficiency standpoint, Darren's gonna hate, hate for me to bring this up, but I'll go back to a water line. And, you know, that was probably under the annex at Riverdale. And there's the, probably the exact same water line under an annex at Oakland. And my understanding is, is, hey, we want you to move that water line, and that's gonna cost four hundred thousand more dollars. And at the end of the day, it's a water line. Who really cares if it's been buried for the last seventeen years? And it's a good idea to move it, cause they had to move a fire hydrant at Riverdale High School, because, well, that's just what we wanted. And I guess what I'm getting at is efficiency. At the end of the day, we all want the same thing for our kids, we wanna have a good experience. And we're asking all these little things, that over time, they add up. And that's the bigger thing. It's, it's a huge cost when we could just say, okay, is it really that important in the grand scheme of things? Some of these things is what I'm getting at.
I won't bring up the water line, I mean, the water line, I can get that, that was a, that was a tough, tough deal.
One thing real quick, and I think we have as a council members, and Austin, I think we agree on this. I don't think, I don't think that as a government, we should exempt ourselves from anything that we require the private sector to do. In other words, saying, do as we say, but we're not gonna do as we say. So, you know, we don't, so for example, as a city, if we said, hey, we're gonna require everybody to pave your parking lots except for us, we're not gonna do that. Or Station Four out at Medical Center Parkway, we're gonna build a really nice new fire station that we require everybody else in Medical Center Parkway to landscape, but we're not gonna do that. To me, that's very hypocritical, and, and that's where I struggle, that whatever we charge the private sector, that's what we should charge the public sector. And I get that it's taking money out of one pocket to the other, but, you know, it, it's a very slippery slope when we start talking about that. Because there are costs that are associated with those fees. There are costs for the inspector's truck who goes out there, their telephone, their insurance, their retirement. There's costs for the electricity that we have at City Hall. So there's, there's a cost with that, that a lot of people don't associate with.
Well, and that was, that was the point I was gonna just bring up, is that, that, that the permit, building code permit fees is not a profit-making venture. It, it really is a cost recovery, an attempt to recover cost. Some of those large projects, we probably over-recovered the level of effort that we expended for that oak. I mean, I don't, I don't think we probably spent a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in our time and resources to, to inspect and ensure that they make, that the building and codes were, regulations were met. So we can look at a better cost recovery. I mean, or if, if you don't wanna us to recover costs for, we just have to make that up maybe, maybe somewhere else. And if that's the case, that's not a problem. I mean, it's, we'll, we can figure it out, and just show you the, the ramifications to, to planning and building codes budget. And, and, you know, we can figure out, absorb that. Development standards are something that I think, though, you know, we're, we're really trying to protect, and, and this is me, and I'm not a planner. We're trying to protect property values, we're trying to ensure water quality standards are met. We're trying to make sure that our cultural and our aesthetic amenity, you know, that, that we're, we're staying, you know, aesthetically good, again, to protect those property values. And so those standards, if we, if we forego landscaping, or buffering, or lighting, or, or irrigation, those are, those are really the big, the bigger, the bigger ticket items. But I would be, I, I think there's a bigger ripple effect if we, if we start loosening the development standard. So I think what I'm hearing is that the development standards, you all are good with us continuing to require those inside the city limits. Outside the city limits, I know with the Beatty School, we eliminated all that. We didn't do the landscaping requirement, we did do the traffic because of those impacts that were involved with our, with our transportation infrastructure. But we waived all the permit fees, and we waived all the, the landscaping and irrigation requirements, I believe. Even the, some of the buffering requirements, and maybe parking requirements, I'm not sure if we, if we did that. But, so look at a better cost recovery model on building permits or waiving them, whoever you guys want us to go. We can go back and do a deeper dive and try to figure out a cost of service on that regard. But on the development standards, just wanna make sure I'm clear that you all, where you all want us to move there.
I'm okay, I just, I guess what I'm getting at is, I'll go back to Riverdale or Oakland. Hey, you gotta have these bushes in, you gotta have them in. I get it, we want the same standard, but is it that important, that immediate? Can we say, alright, we're, you, you've got two years to get your bushes, your trees, what, what have you? Because they are pressed for dollars, is what I'm getting at. And if we were pressed for dollars, I bet we'd be in the same situation if the roles were reversed.
Austin, what, what happens if we give them a two-year buffer for that stuff, and then they don't get it done? What is the repercussions? Cause the, the building's already there, they're already using it, they already got a CFO, so what do we do to recapture at that point?
Great question, I don't know.
I, I think that's why.
It'd be a, a question for Dr. Sullivan, I guess.
That's why the standard's there, cause there's no way to really go back and do anything about it once the.
Certificate of Independence.
The CFO's issue, there's no. No repercussion.
And we would require, and I don't think we can waive this unless we change our ordinance. We would require either a cash bond or some kind of bond that we would require. So it's really not saving them any money, cause they're either gonna have to, you know, so I'm not sure.
Jamie.
Shane. I think we just leave it how it is, and everybody pays the fee. I think it all shakes out in the end. Even us, we pay the fee too. Cause I think you're opening up a can of worms, like somebody else said, than every nonprofit, then we're gonna talk about nonprofits getting the fees waived. And I think, I, I understand taking, it's like taking money from one pot and putting it in the other, but the city is in hurry. from one pot and putting it in the other, but the city is incurring a, a service fee, a cost for doing this. And that's our employment and everything. And, you know, I.
Chris doing here? You know, even, even if you're moving money from one pocket to the other, the idea is the reminder, every time you do that, there is a cost related to that. So I think it's probably prudent, even though we are moving that dollars from one pocket to the other, a reminder that, that there's, and we might consider those fees or something like that if they're more appropriate, that we are recovering what the costs are, if that's an issue as, as we look at those things. But I think the idea of moving one shouldn't keep us from saying, this is a reminder that there's a cost related to that. I think the public wants us to do that. Cause if you, if you don't charge it, what does it worth? I mean, if, if you don't have a fee related to that, it's not worth anything. And you don't have any ideas to where, there's a big question mark as to what this was worth to you. So I think it's, I think it's, it's probably prudent for us to say, you know, keep the, the situation as it is. But if we, if, if, if our recovery is more than what it should be, then consider that. We can consider those fees. But I think keeping the, the process in place is, is responsible.
The other thing I think we do have to talk about and, and I, I thank Dr. Sullivan for all the hard work. I watch all the school board meetings and y'all, I'm a nerd. I was watching the county purchasing committee last meet, last night before we went to bed. Ashley was like, seriously? This is what you're watching when you go to bed? I'm like.
Can't get enough.
I, I do think, you know, ultimately we're all in this together.
Yes.
But, you know, we, we just saw an intersection at Manson and Fortress. And I don't know what the cost of that intersection is, but it's, I don't even want to guess. But as I'm sitting, you know, thinking like we're looking at, we improved the Warrior Drive intersection. We've, we built Dejarnet Lane predominantly because John Pittard's on there, Oakland Middle, Oakland High on there. I mean, we, the, the amount of Thompson Lane, God bless the people in Segal who are getting ready to have to deal with the construction on Thompson Lane. But all of it sort of fits together. We've got a $40 million sewer expansion that we're getting ready to pay. A lot of that has to go to the growth that we have in the community. So there are a lot of things when you really put it all together. The fees that we're charging are a drop in the bucket with the stuff that we're putting all to be able to, you know, to, to work together. So Austin, I'm typically on board with most everything. This one, I just think we need to be very careful.
And I agree. Because if you do open up, quote, you know, Pandora's box and everybody's coming to you. But fundamentally, no offense to Journey Home, Greenhouse Ministries, PCA, those are different privately raised funds. I'm, I'm thinking of public students, public schools. And a $593 fee on a portable at Riverdale, Oakland, Segal, wherever they may be, that's really nothing. That's a drop in the bucket. But 140, 180,000, and to Darren's point, that may be more than what is. I think we do need to have the conversation about recovery or what is an appropriate amount.
Well, does it make, I mean, thinking of this mathematically, if we waive the fee for county schools, right? Cause it's the whole concept of everyone that lives in the city lives in the county, but not everyone that lives in the county and pays county taxes also pays city taxes. So if we waive the fee for the county, are we sort of effectively letting people catch a tax break that live in the county that don't contribute to city taxes?
You mean like parks?
Kind of like that.
Watch it. Watch it. Talk about a can of worms.
City residents do get a discount on paid services at parks.
I, I, I think, I don't want this to get into, we've tried really hard over, I mean, y'all, y'all know this. I mean, and I, I mean, I really went to bat that we gave, and some of it, and y'all went along with it and I appreciate it. But, you know, we extending sewer out to the Beatty property when that was something that we changed our ordinance to be able to do that. And, and I don't want to get into, with all the solid waste issues and planning issues that we have together. I don't want to get into, again, this he said, she said of, you know, the county fighting the city. Each is whatever was reasonable. If Darren and his team come back and say, okay, maybe $150,000 fee on a 50 million, whatever that number is, I think we all will want to be reasonable. But communication, all of us can, can work on that. So, I mean, is that, is that fair, Austin, to maybe let's look at? And that may be the thing on a, a $100 million hospital expansion project that if we were to collect $300,000 in fee, fees, maybe that's too much. You know, I mean, what, how much is a, is enough?
What if we just put a cap? Yeah.
Well, but every, every project has a little bit of nuance that might be different. And, and I, I mean, you'd have to ask the people that are actually doing the work, but, you know, I don't know.
Well, the fee we charged Amazon years ago was not enough because our guys were out there working, you know, we, we had to have our inspectors working 24/7 shifts to be able to accommodate their concrete pours, to be able to hit their schedule. So there's cases where, you know, expedited inspections, there, there are some issues. So I, I don't know what the answer is.
And anytime you get into precedence, precedence can cause problems. So if you put a cap in just to alleviate this issue, but now you have this precedence that.
It's whack-a-mole.
You can play whack-a-mole going down the road. So precedents sound good, but there can be problems with precedence.
But let's also think about this too. And I'm trying to be fair about this. I mean, we just got an email, I don't know, a couple of hours ago where the county's getting ready to pass on second reading their adequate facilities tax impact fee. And it will, it's going from a dollar to a dollar 50. But it's also now going to go to every commercial per, permit that's pulled inside the city. So the commercial businesses who were not paying an impact fee, they're all getting ready to pay a dollar 50 a square foot. And that's generated inside the city. And I would argue, a lot of commercial businesses don't really have an impact as far as growth. I mean, they're, they're really not using services. They're paying 40% in taxes instead of the residential rate. They don't pay for solid waste. They don't pay for, their parking lots are all private. They don't, I mean, they don't pay for services. But now they're going to get taxed a dollar 50. So there's a lot of other stuff that we see that's cat, that's being generated inside the city now that are a lot. I mean, that just came here, what, Darren, an hour ago that.
Well, Kevin told me about it yesterday. So I just, then he followed up and so, yeah.
But there's a lot of overall things when you start holistically looking at it that it's a lot of money.
Uh, you know, I, I support what you had said earlier about what's the fair, is it, to Jamie's point, is a cap fair? You know, I'll go back to the bigger word of just efficiency. And, you know, Greg, McKnight's going to hate me for bringing it up, but you know, you know where I'm going with this, Sean. You know, but Oakland's trying to get a, some sort of Agbarn. And they need a toilet and a sink out there and they're need to get onto the sewer. They're waiting on a building permit. And before they can get that permit and get, I guess bids, you know, we're in this era of inflation. And I'm sure a bid tomorrow will be a little bit more than it was today and a month from now. And so I guess the more efficient we can be is the better off the city and the county end up in the end.
I agree. Efficiency matters.
Speaking of schools, some of us have to be in the school pickup line at 2:30.
Is this web school or?
Central.
Oh, okay.
Speaking of county schools?
Yeah.
It's a county school.
I, I will ask, say this. So I met with Darren and Ben, Kevin, Greg and Sam for a while. And one of the county school board members had sent all of us an email about some projects. And so they, they're putting together a lot of information to meet with y'all individually about. And then Dr. Sullivan to, no, no, I'm saying, our team is getting information to meet individually with the council members and then meet with, with, with Dr. Sullivan as well to, and his team to, you know, as with anything, there's always two sides to every story. So I thought it would just be good. That's not something I really publicly think it's worth getting into, but it's good for each of y'all to be educated on sort of the processes and what's, what's been going on. Any questions?
Last comment to your earlier point though, is, you know, that shared penny, I mean, that's $3 million. So it's, it is a good conversation to have with the county funding body before Jamie goes and picks up somebody at Central, which is a county school. And you're a city taxpayer.
I'm also a county taxpayer.
I know you are. I'm just picking at you.
The people that live in the county, just the county, don't necessarily pay city taxes.
I, I don't think, and again, we are going to hug and all get along with the county and the city, but.
They will not be hugging nor getting along?
Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
Yes.
Turn your mic off. Is this MSNBC?
I feel like Donald Trump. Muted my mic.
It's Kamala versus Trump over here.
Putting words in, in, in Jimmy's mouth. We've all talked about this, but the city school system and Trey, Trey and Jimmy get along great, but we educate 14 some odd percent of the students in the county and every one of those city residents or county residents. And I think if we were to tell Jimmy, hey, we've got 9,000 students that you, you want, you need to educate right now, you would probably pass out. So, yeah. So, you know, they, they work together and we don't need our politics to get in the way of educating kids. And so Austin, you're, you're exactly right with that. The kids come first. So, all right, let's move to our, where did I put my agenda? Oh, let's move to CIP transfers.
This is just information only for the transfers we've been doing periodically.
Any questions on those? Any questions on the July 24 dashboard? We have no board and commission appointments. Any beer permits?
No, sir.
All right. Any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
Any other business?
For me.
Conversations today. It's, it's all always good to talk.
Couple of just points to remind you of. Tomorrow is the, I read succeeds reading in schools day at the county and schools and the city schools. So if you haven't already signed up, please go by and, and read in schools. It's a special day, one of my favorite days of the year. And then to remind you, on the 24th of September, that Tuesday, right here, eight to nine PM is the state of the schools. Dr. Duke will be presenting the state of the schools for 2024, which will help de-cap scores and stuff like that to kind of help you understand what last year was and what next year is going to be. So I'd encourage anybody, and particularly our council, to show up for that eight to nine AM right here on the 24th.
24.
24.
And a reminder, I guess next Tuesday, Vice President Pence is in town at MTSU. I think we were invited to attend. So should be an interesting talk.
At MTSU in Tucker Theater, I think?
Yeah.
All right, everyone. Be mindful of the weather the next, next couple of days. So, all right, we'll stand adjourned.